Here we are, October the 4th already. And so much going on. I hope you are enjoying the weekly mission. Getting out every week and again thanking Deborah Manning for that, putting in all that hard work, thanking all of you for submitting it. We have so many things going on in this campus now that, you know, we're finally going to get to a point where we're going to have a master calendar, get it out for the whole year because there's just so much going on. Next week, or October 14th, we're having a manufacturing day and we're getting high-tech manufacturing, advanced manufacturing companies coming here for a sort of job fair plus a time to not only meet students but talk about internships and other things we want to do with Mission. So that's going to be exciting. So today what I wanted to talk about and get your input is two major initiatives that have come upon us in a fortunate way, positive. One is adult education, which you understand has gone through AB 86, Assembly Bill 86 to Assembly Bill 104, that gets community colleges to provide more adult continuing community education programs, particularly in non-credit with the adult schools in cooperation. This came upon us, it's a block grant from the Superintendent of Public Instruction, comes through that avenue. There are consortiums in every parts of the state that administer these monies. It took us a while, L A CCD to negotiate an agreement with LA Unified. As you know, LA Unified has 600,000 students, it's a big district. So we finally negotiated with LA Unified, Burbank Unified, and Culver City School District, which is in our L A CCD area, an agreement on how we're going to govern ourselves, how we're going to distribute the funds, and a memorandum of understanding. The funds then were released. So we were supposed to in July 1st, 2015, get this funding. We didn't get it till March, excuse me, July 1st, 2014, and we didn't get it till March 2015. Am I correct on that? Or is it 2016?
Sixteen.
Okay, July 1st, 2015, we're supposed to get it. We didn't get it till March 2016, thank you. My head is still swirling around on these dates. So what happened is, we got this allocation and we had this chunk of money, around $720,000 for LA Mission, to administer adult ed offerings. Needless to say, we had to hit the ground running with, because this money had, has to be spent December 31st of this calendar year. So we haven't had a really good, sufficient time to kind of vet this through the campus. So this is our opportunity to say, here's what we've done, what should we do next? And what I want out of this is your input, but also your thoughts about next steps. If we want to have a committee, a task force, to work with us administration, as well as faculty and staff, on how we're going to proceed. So the first item is adult ed. So there are seven program areas originally by AB 104 that we have to work on. Programs in elementary, secondary, basic skills, basic skills math, basic skills English. Programs leading to high school diploma, a high school equivalency certificate. So we have basic skills math, we have basic skills English, and we have a GED program that we offer here at Mission. So that, that needs to be done. Now you should know that the plan for the consortium involved faculty from LA Mission College. Excuse me, I'm just getting over a cold. I went on an accreditation visit, it killed me, last week. But, so we have faculty that were involved in a particular ESL and looking at how we can work with the adult schools. And you know, adult schools are run by K-12 in our LA area. Programs for immigrants eligible for education services in citizenship, English as a second language, and workforce preparation. And we have programs that offer those possibilities here at Mission as well. Education programs for adults with disabilities, that's possible. Programs in career technical education that are not, that are short-term in nature and high, have high employment potential. That star there means only non-credit. We can't offer credit for workforce preparation, or CTE. Programs offering pre-apprenticeship programs, training activities conducted in coordination with one or more appropriate apprenticeship programs approved by the Division of Apprenticeship. And I sent our new dean and the Vice President Allen, a possible RFP on pre-apprenticeship, apprenticeship programs, to be certified by the state, to go after that funding. Right now, we don't really have official pre-apprenticeship, but there is work being done on a job readiness curriculum that will indeed feed into apprenticeship programs and employment opportunities. And I want to thank Dean Saber and your group working on that. Programs for adults, including older adults, that are primarily related to entry or re-entry in the workforce. And again, those are the LARAEC at the bottom, it's the Los Angeles Regional Adult Education Consortium, which we're part of. Executive Committee has determined that no new classes will not be developed for these two program areas. These program outcomes are currently embedded in other programs. So they're not new programs, but how do you ensure that older adults re-entry, you know, in the sense of individual who want changed careers and so forth, how you embed that in your current programs? And then programs for adults, including older adults, that are primarily designed to develop knowledge and skills to assist elementary and secondary children to succeed. Again, no new programs there, this is sort of parent training, parent education. So whatever you offer there, you can, you can do. So initially, we immediately jumped on this for what we already offer. We offer ESL, English and Math, immediately, we do non-credit, we do offer citizenship and GED when, when we're requested. So we did have an expansion of our non-credit offerings this fall, which, and actually, we've been expanding our non-credit program over the last, this '15-'16 academic year, and this '16-'17. But, we haven't still solidified a really strong game plan. One of the things that all the colleges are doing is hiring a dean of adult continuing community education. So in fact, right now, I think Vice President Allen, you told me, there's five colleges that are advertising for a dean. The thought is that, excuse me, the thought is that, with a D, excuse me, I should have got some water, maybe I can grab some over there. Me Chong, or if you can grab me some water, I'm sorry. Anyway, so the thought is that we might want to go that route. But, I want to stop here, thank you, oh, you're a sweetheart, thank you Marion. Are there any questions, comments? We do need to start looking at this '16-'17 year and '17-'18, it's coming upon us. I don't want to send any money back to the state of California. I want us to spend this money for our community. So how do we do that? What kind of partnerships do we need to make? I want to thank Dean Montes for being on top of this, I also want to thank Dennis, is Dennis here? Oh, he's not here, but our non-credit person, doing wonderful work with expanding our non-credit. We already have, working with our North Valley, right? Occupational Center, which is the LAUSD adult school, they're delighted to work with us, they're happy to work with us, they want to expand offerings there at the adult school. We already are working with Burbank Unified, even though Valley College says it belongs to them. But we're working with Burbank Unified and Colony Arts and some other possible offerings. And now that we're opening Sunland Tahunga, we're going to be offering adult education classes, non-credit for them as well. So we have some things in motion, but I want to hear from you, what kinds of things should we be thinking about in adult education? Please, questions? Okay, the question was, it used to be that adult ed and community college credit was considered double dipping. Okay? Thank you. No, that's been taken care of through the legislation. So as long as we, we can offer college, excuse me, non-credit in particular, no problem. Thank you. Other questions? Thank you.
I have a question, why does it have to be non-credit? There is some, I'm asking that is like health occupation courses, these are short-term CTE courses.
Yeah, it's the legislation, that's the way it was written. We'd like to change that in AB, Assembly Bill 104, but they made it that way. There was some concern, I think, that the non, LAUSD would lose students to our college credit programs. Now, can we indeed do concurrent enrollment with adult schools, like we do with high schools, is a question that, you know, we need to look into. I don't know, Darlene, do you have an answer to that? We could offer credit courses, but we have to pay for it out of our adult education budget.
Correct.
But, so that might work, I mean, there's, there's ways we may be able to do that, and you're right, health occupations is in high demand. Yes?
Yes, I'm not sure if this is within the purview of adult education, but many of our students who once complete their GED courses here at Mission, they go to Valley College to take the GED exam. And their recruitment actively recruits our students to Valley campus, and we lose our students to Valley. If we could possibly also offer GED exam here at Mission, that would be, and up, once they pass, then we present them with all the programs we have here at Mission, so they will stay here at Mission, that would be wonderful.
Good, good, thank you. You know, you hold on to that, and if somebody has a question, do you mind taking it to them? Thank you. So I don't, you heard that, and I know we give GED, Darlene, but we could expand that effort, I think it's a good idea to kind of hook them into LA Mission College. I know we do, most of the ones we try, but we, your suggestion is, let's expand the marketing of GED. Vice President Allen has a comment?
The college has already applied to become a GED testing center. So we're just waiting for the first process to be completed.
Good, so that'll help. We do GED preparation, but we weren't a GED testing center, so we're going after that Other questions? So who in this audience would be interested in, in a meeting where we can start delving into the next steps of our plan? Because I don't want the administration to make all these decisions, I want your input, both classified staff and faculty. And I see people smiling, but I really believe that. Go ahead, Gary. Okay, so Gary is aboard.
Yeah, I'm on board with that.
Okay, good, so we needed your testimonial. So we got Gary, who else? Milky? Academic Senate President Angela? Jacob? Louise?
Oh, good.
And Margie? And we have a hand back here, Frances? When?
Sherry.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, and Sherry Loper. Oh, that sounds like a good representation, counseling, we got our budget person, faculty, Senate President, AFT Faculty Guild President, and Margie, of course, our communications guru, faculty, and Angela. Mark, would you like to join that group? Absolutely. Okay, so do me a favor, I know we have it all on film, but Darlene, if you could just take names and badges, no, write all their names down and I'll go over it with you. One more time, raise your hand. Margie, Gary, Jacob, Louise, Angela, Mark, Sherry, and Frances.
And Leslie.
Well, that's, that's a given. I'm sorry, Leslie. Question?
Who are the students that we're targeting and how does that mesh with LA Unified?
Very good question. We're looking at adult learners, which all our students are adult learners, so it's kind of a misnomer in a way that we're doing adult ed. We do adult ed, because our students are adults. But we're looking for individuals that are seeking to enter the job market, that are looking to improve their English skills, their computer skills, for entry-level job market activity. 20% of LA County residents do not have a high school diploma, 25% do have a high school diploma. So that means 45% or less than 50 have any kind of post-secondary education. And we're looking at this as a way of bringing those that don't have high school diplomas or those who want to change their sort of occupational status, move into other careers, into college. So it's not just, we're going to provide adult ed, it's to provide adult ed so they go to college. Many of you know of success stories of individuals that went to adult school and decided to go to college. Our own counselor did that, they did a story about her, I'm blanking on her name right now, but you know who I'm talking about. What's her name?
Alayda.
Thank you, I was going to, Alayda, exactly. So there's so many possibilities, so that's what we're looking for.
What exact, well, more or less, what are the areas that the funding can pay for? So is it faculty, is it what?
Yeah, we have guidance on that. Darlene, do you want to kind of?
I have a question.
What are the allowable costs for the adult education funds?
We offer ESL classes, currently, the money's being spent on ESL classes, so we were able to increase the number of standard hours in non-credit. So the majority of the money is going toward ESL faculty salaries.
So it can pay for faculty salaries, it can pay for administration, it can pay for counseling, because you do need counseling support with this population, it can pay for furniture, equipment in some regards?
Curriculum development, we have faculty working on curriculum development.
So we set aside money for curriculum development, and we still holding on to that, so, yes, curriculum development.
For the non-credit to credit pathway.
Exactly. So I think this committee that we have just formed, will get into those details, and then we can start looking at it. Textbooks, I'm not sure. I think there's something called instructional materials, but I don't know if they'll pay for textbooks.
Yeah, I don't believe textbooks is an allowable expense.
Right, but we could get, technology is allowed. So you could have equipment in, in terms of technology, smart classroom kind of stuff. Your question?
Yes, what's going to happen for those that are not residents or that do not have documents? At this point, I know the classes are free, but afterwards?
Well, they would fall under the, just like the high schools, if they had three years of adult ed or high school, and are now in adult ed, they would be AB 540 eligible. So we would not have a problem providing that, those classes for them.
But that means that they have to stay in the program three years?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
So that means that they would have to stay in the program three years to be qualified for the GED?
No, many of these individuals, if they're new immigrants, they're going to have to be in their, my understanding, three years. But if they've already been here as children, have a high school diploma, and now it's gone back, not a problem. Or don't, don't have a high school diploma, but they have residency for those three years, they are, they're eligible for AB 540 at the high school. I'm not confusing you, I just want to, if they're brand-new immigrants, yes, they would have to take, partake of the three-year, in order to get that, that not having to pay Other questions? Those are good questions, you know? Leslie, I'm so glad we're doing this, because, you know, I'm, sometimes administrators, we, oh, let's roll this out, let's get this done. And we don't think through all those kinds of questions. Yes, Angela?
Have you found that this classes are open entry classes, is that an option, or they have to be semester-long?
Oh, open entry's an option. We can work, the question was, can we have open entry? We can work with the adult schools on open entry, open exit. And you know, adult schools are different, they're, they're 365 days a year. High school diplomas are awarded every month. So you may get a high school graduate from an adult school, that graduates in March, another one in April. So we have to be flexible and adaptive to that, because we're in a semester system. So we have to figure out, as soon as they graduate, how do we get them, you know, to come to Mission? So those are, that's excellent question. And those are some of the dilemmas, because we're two different systems in that sense. So we're going to have to kind of merge and marry with LA Unified and the other school districts. Other questions?
The minute.
Okay, okay, so we've got the committee, I'll, I'll call a meeting. Of course, Darlene will be there, and one, and you know, Vice President Allen, and Marla, our new CTE dean, and others. And are there any students in the audience? You should think of, yes, there you are. In fact, I want to interview you real soon, so get ready. We need to have student representation, so take her name, Darlene, and contact information. Okay, the other big thing that's going on, and you've probably read the papers, and we need your input on this too, is called the Los Angeles College Promise. Los Angeles College Promise. Let me see, I think it's right here, right? Where is it? Yeah. So let me give you an intro. The mayor of Los Angeles City called the Superintendent of LA Unified, Michelle King, and called the, our chancellor, Francisco Rodriguez, and said, "I want to start a college promise for city residents." So the idea would be that the city of Los Angeles, in partnership with L A CCD and LA Unified, and the philanthropic community, would fund one year of free tuition for all They want to roll this out fall 2017. There are 6,000 students that graduate that go to community colleges. 3,000 of those go to LA community colleges. The other 3,000 go, you know, Glendale, Santa Monica, what we call our outlier, outliers, community colleges, Pasadena City. So the thought is, how do we capture these, we're going to have to fund these 3,000. Now, we know that 80%, or 75 to 80% of these students are Bog eligible. Most of them will meet the Board of Governors waiver for tuition, or fees, 46 bucks a unit. So, but there's 15 to 20% that are not eligible. So that's the fundraising we have to do as L A CCD, LA Unified, and the mayor, and the philanthropic community. And we're thinking that's going to cost $3 million, 3.2 million for each year. The mayor's already raised 1.75 million. We're trying to raise our part, LA Unified's raising their part, and then we're going to the philanthropic community. Eli Broad Foundation kicked in 400,000. So we're beginning to get the, the thing going. The program is not just about free tuition. What it is, and it's for the first year, okay? Free tuition, the only condition is you have, you have to take a full load, 12 units. So every, of the nine colleges, we all have programs and activities that would support these students. And again, it's not about free tuition, it's about student success. They get in, they're tantalized, and the idea is to create a college-going culture, that you can tell any child, free college for the first year. And hopefully, we can get this going with free college for two years. But right now, it's free college for years, so that they get in their heads, there's no financial barrier, even though we know textbooks are a barrier, we know transportation is sometimes, but that's why we have financial aid to help us get through some of that. Have all the kinks been worked out? No. We're, we're sort of building a, sailing a ship while we're building the ship. So where we are now is, we're looking at the core elements of every promise program, whether it's at East, West, Pierce, Valley, or Mission. And the core elements are early outreach and engagement for LA Unified School District. Now this is for high school graduates, LA Unified, including LA Unified charter schools. So charter schools are eligible for this, Caesar Chavez, Escher Chavez Academies, and others. So what are the core elements? College info days, which we already do, FAFSA completed in high school. That's going to be a challenge, Dennis, I know, but Michelle King, the superintendent, is guaranteed to get her counseling staff on board, that they do FAFSA's in the high school. And this is important, because FAFSA now is October 1st, right? It's an earlier application date. So the sooner they can get it, you know, the better they will be. So that's something we're going to work with outreach, and the Vice President of Student Services is going to spend time on that, and I'm going to turn to, ask him a question or two in a minute. Priority registration based on Triple SP. We already have priority registration for every single student who comes in as freshmen, if they go through Student Support Success Program, which is a state-funded program. What they have to do to be eligible is they have to get assessed, they have to go to orientation, and they have to get an ed plan from our counselors. And we have what we call a preliminary ed plan, just to get them started, right, Ludi? And then we have the comprehensive ed plan for the remainder of, of the time here. The preliminary, I think, is the first semester, and then the comprehensive has to kick in by the second semester. So we already have that in place, that's a core element of this LA College Promise. The assessment placed based on multiple measures. So you all know that there is this discussion, and I think implementation, right, Dr. Villa? Of multiple measures assessment beginning in fall 2017? Okay. So every college is going to have that, that core component. And then pre-enrollment and support services. So pre-enrollment is what we do before they enroll with support services and sometimes the transition period, which leads us into first-year experience, what we calling first-year experience. So summer transition programs, boot, math bootcamps, you know, summer bridge programs, all of that folds into the first-year experience. And I'm looking at Diana back there, because she's been working on this for some time with, with our, I'm blanking again. What is it? Yes, okay. And then they have to take 12 to 15 units per semester in order to be eligible. Structured scheduling include English and math, in terms of making sure that they get those courses, and with priority registration, we can, we can make that happen. And then success coaching as indicated college model. Could be counseling, advising, tutoring, mentoring, success workshops, and much of what we do already. We already do the fall kickoff, and that's, that's part of that, that whole scene. So those are the core components, and every college has a little bit So those are the core components and every college has a little bit different take on it. East is got a, what they're aiming for is a cradle-to-grave kind of program. They're starting with elementary kids and their, and their promise. Through, and then with Garfield High School in Cal State LA, they're guaranteed admissions to Cal State LA. Long Beach City, that was their, their model, guaranteed admissions to Cal State Long Beach if you go to Long Beach City. But, you know, so this promise thing could take very different forms. It doesn't have to be one way. It has to be, what is good for us? What's our culture? How do we address the needs? So, the district has assembled a design teams. And we needed, again, to move on this, so we, we did, and I know the district academic senate had their meeting last Friday. We've had various other meetings that we've attended. So we came up with some names to go to a design team meeting of all nine campuses. It will be October 14th at Los Angeles City College. And I've asked Dr. Villa, our Vice President of Student Services, to help orchestrate that with the district. So, let me see if I have that. Oh, I don't have it in this one, it's, it's, it's another slide. I have the names of the individuals that are going to that. Okay, it's that slide, this team list one? I'm sorry I'm so helpless Terry. My wife does everything for me at home. So, I, I'm without her right now. So, again, questions? I would like a committee or a task force to work with the design team. I understand from Dr. Villa that he wants to attend the academic senate meeting to give you a, a presentation on this whole thing of, he wants input. But we need to have, okay, I'm sorry, let me read the names. Veronica Diaz Cooper. She's Associate Professor, Vice Chair of the English Department. Thank you Louise, that was great to have her. Carlos Gonzalez, the Dean of Student Success. Sarah Master, Dean of Institutional Effectus. Larry, Larry Resendez, Dean of Student Services, you know, particularly with disabled and Program Director of Disabled Students Services. Isabel Saber, Dean of Academic Affairs. Marla Ulliana, Dean of Career Technical Ed and Workforce Development. Christopher Villa, VP of Student Services, and Ludi Vegas Vidal, Dean of Student Services. So that's the current design team. Their role on the four, on the October 14th, from my understanding, will be to talk about the core elements, how mission may move forward, what other colleges are doing, what's a timeline that makes sense for mission and so forth. So it's, it's more of informational training by the district from the experts that they're bringing in. Training that includes best practices from other colleges that have done this, not only in California, but across the nation. And so, again, it's still forming. There's gonna be a national, there was a statewide California Promise Meeting in Oakland that I attended with all the CEOs. We had presentations from various Kalamazoo Community College, Kentucky, Tennessee, about what they did in this promise stuff. There will be a national promise meeting in Washington DC in October. And so, all the promise initiatives across the nation, they're gonna convene there to talk about what they're learning, what they've done, and so forth. So, we're still in the formative stages. Dr. Villa, did I miss anything?
Thank you, Dr. Perez. There have been a couple of changes on the team membership for the October 14th implementation team meeting that's gonna be held at LA City College. I believe Marla, is Marla here? Yeah. Are you gonna be able to make this meeting or, yeah, I know. So it's, no, it's okay. So we do have a math faculty attending. We asked Debbie Wong to identify a faculty person from math. And is she here? Okay, I'm looking for her name here because I'm still learning more about faculty. Isabel?
Rula.
Who is it? Rula. Okay, so she'll be attending. And then also, because we're so busy with so many schedules that we're coordinating, we need to find a substitute for Ludi Vegas Vidal because she won't be able to attend. And we think it'd be a good idea to have another faculty person attend because it's critical that this initiative, it was made very clear at the DAS Summit, that we need as much faculty involvement, leadership with regard to this whole effort because it, it won't be successful unless we have faculty buying for this whole event. Leslie, you have your hand up.
I've had several faculty ask me, I've had a list of faculty members, so I have no idea if these teams have already been. It's very interesting.
Well, what happened is I consulted with VP Allen to consult with faculty, and you know, we'll take responsibility. You can already see, there's a lot of administrators here. So we can always change the membership team. Certainly, we could substitute Ludi with another faculty person, but if there's a need to have more faculty, I think in working with, with Michael, we'll, we're more than open to having more faculty participate. Yeah, Michael?
I just wanted to let the faculty know that when the district sent out the announcement regarding this training, they actually prescribed the different individuals from the different areas that they wanted. So, when Chris and I got together, we actually, you know, just kind of matched folks up with what, what Deborah Harrington and her crew were requesting. So, but, um...
Yeah.
No, we were not leaving faculty out.
So, let me suggest something and then I want to take questions and Dr. Villa and I can answer. I would like whatever this design team is for now, and then of course, we know that we're gonna have these two faculty replacements. By the way, Marla can't make it because she has to be here for Manufacturing Day with all those big companies. I would like individuals to meet with this design team, hopefully prior to October 14th, if possible. If not, at least after the 14th so they can work together. So again, I'm asking for a committee, a task force, individuals are willing to volunteer, may not be at the 14th meeting, but can meet with the design team. All right, I have some questions back here. Yes, Cindy?
I was just gonna say, I think it'd be very important to have someone from the counseling department there because so many of these services are coming through counseling.
Yes, I would agree with that. In fact, you mentioned faculty, I was thinking of a counseling faculty member that could join them. Diana?
I was also gonna say, it's gonna be very important to have our academic senate president on the team, Leslie Milkie.
Leslie, would you like to be on the team? Okay, good. So we'll put Leslie there and a counseling faculty member, and I think we have, we have what we need. But it's this, this whole thing with the design team, they're not gonna be the final arbiters of what our model looks like. We need to be the final arbiters. I want all of our faculty and staff to have input. So if we can't schedule a meeting prior, we should at least try to do it immediately thereafter and start putting together our model. Other questions? Go ahead Louise.
Okay, so we've been through Achieve the Dream. We've done the Basic Skills Initiative, starting with that, which lasted for a few years. Big state moved initiative, came up with our matrices, went through Achieve the Dream, which gave us a student perspective and that was good. We have been working so hard on this campus with the first-year experience. And, you know, every time somebody gets a brilliant idea, we're, we're recreating the wheel. So I implore all of you to consider making stronger and institutionalizing the things that we've tried so hard, we've worked so hard on. So we have the bootcamps in the summer, we have the liaisons with the high schools, we have the English, math tracks. We really don't have help with that in terms of placement. It's been hell, quite frankly, and a lot of good people have put in a lot of extra time from counseling to get those students into those tracks and into the right classes where they need their prerequisites and we're kind of going beyond that. You, you know what I'm talking about. So, my point is, wonderful, you know, the district once again and that they, the mayor who has his political ambitions and would like to go out with glitter on his record, that's fantastic. But I think we need to be sure-footed and reinforce what we already have and do an even better job with what we, we already have. So that, that's, that worries me, quite frankly. The other thing that worries me is the funding. Because, yes, you know, you know, it's, we're talking about tuition. Most of the students that we're talking about already have free tuition. So again, we're, it's sort of glitter that we're focusing on rather than a reality. Okay, well, this is what we do anyway, so, you know, no objections. But, if we're going to amp up what we already have, where's the funding coming for that? And that if we do have money coming in and it's kind of questionable to having private foundations funding us, only because, you know, there is a huge push for a two-tiered system in California. We now have a chancellor out of Long Beach where that system is favored. So we have big question marks about where all of this is going, if private funding is behind what we do, what are the strings attached? So I think the funding issue is something we have to be really careful about and we have to support what we already have.
Well said. Thank you Louise, well said. The institutionalization of what we already have, I think is, in my mind, and I don't know if you discussed this at the academic senate meeting last week, is paramount. If we know it works, first-year experience, fall kickoff, bootcamps, placement in math and English, we need to fund that. And we've got to find the dollars to do that and redirect our resources accordingly. I'll give you, for instance, STEM did not get refunded, so we're gonna have to institutionalize tutoring. Fortunately, we institutionalized a STEM counselor, but we have to make sure that what was working continues. So I think that's a very good comment. With regard to the sort of higher thing is where is this all going? I'm not sure I know yet. I, I think the country has been moving in this direction since Obama announced it. You know politically, the college students want it, that's why they supported Bernie Sanders, and that's why Hillary is saying, "I want free tuition for college students." Because nationally, this age group wants that support. The other problem is, politically, and I don't mean to get off on this, but proprietary schools killed us. Look at ITT, they closed down. All those loan, loans that the students took. It was a travesty. So that really hurt us. And that's why these poor students are going like, "Hey, do I have to mortgage my life to $100,000 just to get an education?" So there's a lot of dynamics to this. So I don't know in the big picture where it's going, but I do know that if we can find a way, and the question of private money, Herb Alpert just gave 10 million to Los Angeles City College for music, and I think the chancellor used that as, as an example. There are strings. That 10 million will only be used for music students. So if we get a donor that says, "I only want my money for file, family and child studies", and by the way, we do have donors like that, they give scholarships to specific areas, we need to think about how we want to handle that. So there's... Yeah, okay. Yeah, I hear you. So, I think the design team should work with the individuals that did follow, you know, that are interested. Are there any individuals not on the design team that would like to meet with the design team either prior or right after the meeting? Anybody? We need a classified staff member to be part of this. Suzanne?
I just have a question.
Well, speak in the mic, please.
I, I just have a question. If, we're getting like 3,000 students, you know, for that, you said?
Not us, the whole district.
Okay. What about the staffing? Because we're so understaffed in departments and admissions especially is gonna be registered, you know?
Good point.
Yeah. Custodians have to clean up, you know? You guys even thinking about the staffing?
Yes, well, as far as custodian, and Danny can speak to some of this, it depends on our full-time equivalent. We then get dollars off the top of the apportionment for custodian and maintenance, okay? So if we, if all of a sudden next year, we get 1,000 new students, we are gonna have to get a, an allocation, right Danny? Do you want to explain that?
Uh, yeah. Good afternoon, everybody. Yes, when, as we add capacity and custodial and, and student base increases, then we work with the district's office on a formula that they have for students and space usage to increase our M&amp;O staffing. But we are very conscious to have the problem where we're gonna need more staff if we have more students, so that's something that we're definitely discussing. And, and various departments do have another program review also.
Yes, and, and I think that institutionalization thing that Louise is talking about needs to consider the classified staff institutionalization. We may want to focus more, Dr. Villa and Student Services, more attention to the model and less attention to things that are not working. And I'm not, and I don't, I can't give you that right now, I'm just saying, we may say, okay, you know, first-year experience, the bootcamps, there's a priority registration. There will be an application process for the LA College Promise so we can track these students. And so, not every student who graduates from LA Unified, if they don't apply for this, will get the free tuition, unless we have some funding left over and we decide we're gonna do that. But again, the design team has to talk about that. You know, how we go about that. Okay, any other comments? All right, let me suggest this. October 14th, the design team is going to go to this training. At the appropriate time, why don't we have another town hall meeting and the design team can begin to talk about what the model might look like for us? Does that make sense? And I don't know if that meeting would be in November, the design team may need more time, but we, we, we don't have a whole lot of time because we gotta start outreach students in the spring, we have to announce this in our marketing, Alejandro's here, we gotta start announcing this, getting students aware of it, parents. Then we're gonna do outreach in the spring, we've gotta get them to apply, so there's steps to be taken. And part of the design team training is gonna be the timeline. So that's something you can give us when you get back. Yes, Par?
What happens after one year? Because the tuition free time period is just for year one, so what happens after they enter the second year? Are we anticipating a lot of withdrawals?
The question that, thank you. The question that Dr. Par is asking is what happens the second year? And so that's something the design team and all of us have to think about. We want them to complete. We want them to finish and go on to transfer or to, you know, certification or whatever they decide to do. So how do we guarantee that to happen in the second year? So yes, that's a key question. Now, a lot of promise programs go two years. They fund it for two years. We're not making that kind of promise at this point. So, that's something we're gonna have to address. Yes, let's take the microphone back there. Thank you, sir.
What about assessment? Valley and Pierce are already at the high schools. They, they've already started testing by November. I talked with Rosalie and high school students can start registering, we can start going out there in November, testing them. They should be tested starting in November, December and January, and, because we should be finished in May. And because we should be finished in May.
Absolutely, and that, so...
But we need, staff, admissions needs staff, financial aid needs staff, assessment needs staff. And I won't be here.
Oh my God, what are we going to do? Well, this is something that Vice President Villa, all the vice presidents I have been talking about. This gets to redirection of resources and institutionalization that Louise brought up. We have to step up our game in assessment, in outreach, in financial aid. We're going to have to step up our game. Now, is that going to mean more resources for them? Probably. We'll have to figure out how to fund that. But also, let's face it, LA Unified has a responsibility here too. They got to step up their game to get their students to be ready for the FAFSA, for assessment. Open their doors. Don't give us a bad time, "Oh, you can't come at this hour now." And fortunately, we have good relations with our feeder high schools, and many of the high schools we work with, we have good relations. But sometimes bureaucracy gets in the way. So there is a meeting, my understanding, Dr. Villa and Vice President Ellen and Vice President Muñez. My understanding is that we're going to have an area superintendent meeting for the Valley. So Pierce, Valley, and Mission will go to that. And we're going to meet with all the counselors of all the high schools and all the principals. And they're going to get directed by the superintendent, cooperate with LA Colleges in the Valley. Same thing's going to happen in the other area superintendents. So that kind of answers your question of how we go about making sure that we do early assessment, early outreach, and early financial aid. Any other questions? Okay, so any other comments? You have anything else?
I just want to mention this design team is only eight people. Only five to eight people were invited to, from each campus to attend. By no means is the design team the only group. Our hope is that we get as many people from the campus community, especially our faculty, to weigh in on this effort. Because for it to sustain over the long term, it needs, it has to have faculty support and buy-in. We're aware of that. So that's critical. So the more participation from the faculty in this effort, the better. And I know that I'll be going to academic senate soliciting input from faculty to get faculty participation as well. Also, I want to mention that, you know, I think you raised a good point, Louise. We do so many things, we've done so many things already. One of the things that we'll probably explore is just do an inventory on all of the projects that we've been involved in up to this point before we start creating something new. Maybe we can build on FYE, build on something else, right? So in all likelihood, we're going to move in a direction of asking, "What is it that we're doing now? Let's put it on paper. Let's make sure everybody knows what's happening, and let's figure this thing out. What are we going to do after we get that information?"
Thank you, Dr. Villa. And Leslie, I understand that you're going to give him a little time at the senate meeting to get more input. Anything else? Okay, well, I think we've had this. We'll have another town hall meeting early November and catch up with where we are with both initiatives. Thank you.
Just want to remind people real quick, today is National Taco Day on a Tuesday.